Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 25th City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, can we have a roll call, please?
Beersstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Cronk.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Next, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the October 11th regular meeting and the October 11th closed session minutes.
I still move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have approval of bills with Mr. Watson.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $1,685,442.65, subject to comptroller.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to public comments, petitions. If anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Otherwise, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First one is acknowledgement of the following minutes from the River Falls Housing Authority of 9/14, the Police and Fire Commission from 8/1, the Park and Rec Advisory Board from 9/21, Utility Advisory Board from 9/19, the Historic Preservation Commission from 7/13. Number two is a resolution appointing the city clerk. This resolution will appoint Jennifer Zylar-- I'm gonna say this wrong-- Jennifer Zylar as a city clerk effective November 1st, 2016. Um, where am I here? Sorry. Number three is resolutions recommending shared savings loan. The first one is a resolution approving shared savings loans agreement and promissory note with WPPI Energy. This resolution will approve a shared savings loan application for Moody's Incorporated. And B is a resolution approving shared savings agreement with Moody's Incorporated. Number four is a resolution regarding health and dental insurance renewal for 2017 with Health Partners. Number five is a resolution approving general development plan for Spring Creek Estate first edition planned unit development. Does anybody want to pull anything? Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions or comments on anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to ordinance resolution. First one is a resolution approving the committee members, the plan schedule, and public engagement plan for the Kinney-Kinney River Corridor Plan. And Buddy has a short-- Buddy Lucero has a short little presentation for us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and City Council members. Earlier this year, I'd come in front of the City Council to request some assistance, technical assistance, and that was to hire a consulting firm to help us in the review process and the planning process for the Kinney-Kinney River Corridor Plan. Those consultants were SEH, which we did hire. They're a company that this city has worked with for quite a period of time. We got to know them well. And over the past several months, we have been working with two project teams, the consultant team and a project team that was made up of the city division staff. And we were meeting to go ahead and start the engagement, work as part of what the basis we need to get this planning process going. And the three things that the mayor mentioned are the three items that we're looking at. The first is an advisory committee, the second a schedule, the third is an engagement plan. When we started looking at developing memberships or advisory for this, we went ahead and sent out invitations through our newsletter, a newsletter that went out to every resident in the city of River Falls. We also put that on our city website. We worked with the papers to notify people and just general discussion. Through that, we got a variety of people that applied for the position. And as a committee or this project team, we wanted to go ahead and provide a variety of members on this committee that would-- with different backgrounds. We felt it was very important, though, to also have some representation from our planning commission, our utility board, and also our park and rec, as well as the city council. The other members are large. We looked at people from nonprofits, economic development, from residents, to people with different backgrounds. Now, to help guide them along, one of the important things that we did is we developed a charter. And that charter would be one that they would be able to follow. What is your role on this advisory committee? And we outlined that because it is advisory to the city council, to the staff, and to the other committee members. And it talks about how they look at the different information that's presented to them, attending meetings, reviewing documentation, any kind of design or graphs, and even being part of any public process that we have. So, to guide that further, we wanted to go ahead and present a schedule. And we wanted to look more detail in the schedule of what are we gonna look at for the next two, three, or four years down the road. Because what we're looking at is the corridor also at the issue of relicensing on the dams. So we wanted them to parallel each other, as we talked about this, carrying the same weight, very important weight at that. So we attached in your report is the schedule that we're looking at. And then, the third item, the exciting item, the fun item, is the engagement plan. And this is how fun it is, because we have a communication officer, she actually put together talking notes so I wouldn't miss anything. And this is important, because she was very involved with the consultant in putting this together. But the engagement plan is one that we need to be able to reach out to the general public to have them have a good understanding of what we're doing, when we're doing it, and where we're doing it. And one of the big things that she's been working on is our own website that we have that be able to allow people to come in, see our minutes, see our plans, see any photos, existing reports, information, where the next meeting's gonna be, and other things. That's tech talks. One of the things we talked about is having a variety of tech talks through the process that educate the public. These would be at public meetings, but also utilizing our video and our TV to be able to show this on the cable access and even on our website. We look at working with-- when we have events, Bacon Bash or other events, to be out there with the public, to be able to hear what they have to say and to talk to them about what's going on, to show them the information, and also through different varieties of surveys. We found this very successful in using other plans that we did for the Park and Recreation Master Plan. We found a lot of these ideas that worked really well. And these are things that we incorporated in the engagement plan. Our objective here, if this is approved, is to bring together this committee, start meeting in November, start educating them on what we're trying to accomplish and where we're going. Our goal for now is to set December 8th, which is a Thursday, to have our first public open house, which would be at the library at 6:30. So we're starting to work up that information to be able to start getting the people to attend that and start getting the plan rolling. So in front of you tonight is a resolution requesting your support on the three topics that we just talked about, the members, the schedule, and also the engagement plan. There are other representatives here, the consultants here and other staff, if you have any additional questions or comments that you'd like to make.
Thanks, Buddy. Thanks. Does anybody have any questions for Buddy?
Just one quick one. I think I read it in here, but just to confirm, these meetings are open to the public, but the discussion is to be held by the group? Is that my understanding?
Yes, all meetings will be open to the public. We'll be taking minutes on them. We'll be following Robert's rules of order. And yes, well, they are.
Although I did-- I just-- you did say in here that the-- that the group could choose to either recognize or allow, you know, open discussion in the meeting should they decide on that?
Very much so. We're welcome to have people come along. Sometimes they might want to share ideas with us. Depending on what the agenda is, we always have that opportunity to allow folks to speak up.
So would that be for the mayor or the chair of that committee to present that option at that time? Or would it be just somebody coming, raise their hand, "Hey, I gotta comment"?
Kinda like here tonight, you know? Is there somebody in the audience that has something that says that's on the agenda and we'll take a look at it? You know, sometimes you can get a full house of people coming in. And there's-- sometimes we have to be able to manage that, but if we know that's gonna happen, we'll be prepared for it, hopefully.
Okay. Thanks, Buddy.
All right, thanks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve the resolution for the committee members' plan schedule and public engagement plan for the Kinney River Corridor Plan.
Second.
I have a comment or some-- yep, thanks. One of the things is I read the resolution and read the staff memo is, we definitely have the right people. I have no qualms about the people we have appointed. I'm-- what my concern is, is that we're appointing the people rather than maybe their designation, be it the Chamber or their land trust or Trout Unlimited. And rather than go through here and designate sort of a seat for each of those organizations, what I'd rather do is just add another whereas, that the members serve at the pleasure of the mayor. That way, if there is a change, if it happens, it's clear that they will know-- if they leave a position that's sort of attached to a stakeholder, that that stakeholder has a chance to remain represented on the committee. So with that, I'd make a motion that we add a whereas after the-- add a fourth where-- a number four whereas, that the members of the Kinney River Corridor Committee shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
Second.
Okay. So I got a first and a second. Any questions or comments on what Scott wants?
I think it's a good idea.
So, yep, I think it's a very good idea. And so we'll vote on that first. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go back. We got a first and a second on the original. Any questions or comments on any other stuff? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we move on to reports. We have a report from the Planning Commission. Tony and Amy will give us a report on the South Main Street Study. I guess it'll just be Tony. Sorry, Tony.
There we go. Yeah, looking for the-- what's that? It's a little hat. Where's that, Julie?
And there's Amy. Rescue.
Oh, I see. I see it now. I'm sorry. I need those new glasses that we're gonna get with. There we go. All right, Mayor and council members, what we have tonight is a report on the Plan Commission. We gave one last year, so we'll just give a quick report on the Plan Commission and then talk a little bit about the South Main Street report. Just as an overview, we'll talk a little bit about the Plan Commission basics, some of the things that we did in 2016, workload review, again, the South Main Street report, and then Amy's gonna just do a little bit on looking ahead to 2017. Just some of the basics. Statutorily, I think it's 66.23. Just know that over the years. That's the state statute that regulates the Plan Commission, and it pretty much tells very specifically what the duties are of the Plan Commission, and if anybody's interested, I'd suggest you go read that. Statutorily, there's only required to have seven members. That's including three citizen members. About 20 years ago, the city expanded that to nine members. We have a mayor, council member, one city official, that being the city engineer, a park board chairman, and five citizen members. And they are-- and we do have two of our members here tonight.
Three.
Three? Well, I was gonna get to you. You're a council member. You're not a-- no, I'm just kidding. We have Mayor Toland, who's the chairman, and Scott Morissette is the council member. Reed Ronsky's here. He's our city engineer. Susan Reese is in the audience, and she is the park board chairman, and that is statutory. We have Lisa Moody. She is a citizen member. And we also have other members, Todd Schultz, Andrew Brown, Mary Van Galen. And we also have one position that's vacant as of right now. So that would bring us to nine. The role of the commission, they do a lot of different things. They are-- do work a lot closely with the Plan Commission, as you saw tonight, or with the City Council, excuse me, as you saw tonight, you approved a resolution regarding the general development plan for a PUD that's something that came with a recommendation from the Plan Commission to the City Council. Community planning, the Plan Commission is involved with putting together the general development plan and then reviewing it, keeping it up, and working with that. Subdivisions, the Plan Commission has been very active in subdivisions. We're actually getting to be a little bit more busy than we were in the last seven or eight years, but many of you may recall, some of you were here. I think, Hal, you were here when, early days back in the early 2000s, when that's all we were working on, our subdivisions, all the time. That kinda slacked off around 2007, but it's really started to pick up, and I'll show you a little bit further down some of the things that we've been just doing this year. Zoning, we're involved with zoning, rezonings, zoning amendments required as part of annexations. The official map, anything on the official map that comes forward to designate a street or a road has to go through with a recommendation from the Plan Commission to the City Council. We're active in development review. Tax increment districts, we're active with-- in the TID, is we have a role in the approval of the different TIDs. There was two of them that were approved just this year. Again, agreements, we review agreements and make recommendations to the City Council. Annexations are reviewed and are referred back to the City Plan Commission for referral and recommendation back to the council. Again, now, I'd like the workload summary, excuse me. In 2016, we'd worked on a number of different things. There was certainly the annexation that was done, the council and the Man Valley property just outside of town, now in town, but not really in town. Just a joke. Along with that was, we had to zone it, and so that went back to the City Plan Commission for a recommendation, and then finally for permanent zoning. Special use permits, you may recall, we did one, and then eventually we came to the City Council, and that was a special use permit for a church out on Cemetery Road. Verizon Wireless Communications Tower, that's one that we're working on right now. That's already passed through the Plan Commission. We're just waiting for a few other documents to take place, and then we're gonna be bringing that to the City Council for review and approval. Subdivisions, that's where I said we've seen a little bit more activity this year than we have in past year. We've been doing a little bit of going back to older subdivisions and kind of cleaning them up as developers are trying to rework those. And I think we're starting to get down to the point where probably in the next year or so, we'll probably start seeing maybe some new subdivisions come in. But we've been doing things such as minor amendments, Stonebook Town Homes, preliminary plat extension for Spring Creek first edition. That was because the overall developers' agreement lapsed, and we extended that another five years, and I think their plan is to get it all done within the next few years. Final plat for Knollwood, second addition. That one is currently-- was approved at the Plan Commission. We're just waiting for some information to come in. I know that they have to bring in their plans to the engineering department to review for the improvements. And so that one will be coming probably in-- I don't know if it'll be coming next month, but certainly before spring. And that would be to finish off that second addition to Knollwood. Spring Creek Estates, the PUD, that's one that you were looking at tonight. They're working on a specific implementation plan right now, and that'll be coming to the City Plan Commission and then on to council here, probably in early spring, January or so. Again, we talked about the tax incremental districts. We worked on TID 10 and 12. The public hearing process was through the Plan Commission. Other things that we've done, we've done joint workshops with the park board on Glen Park. I know Amy worked with a parking variance for Best Made Cookies. And administrative review of ordinance modifications, that was-- there was some discussion about storage units, and that came before the Plan Commission. We had a discussion on that. The other thing that we've been working on is in workshop is the South Main Street Study. And the purpose of the study is to lay the foundation for a future plan. It's not a plan, it's a study. The plan would come with more input from the general public. Within the study, we were trying to identify the needs that we saw and use the plan, or excuse me, the study, as a guide for future development in the interim. The process, again, we started in 2015. We've been working with the Plan Commission, and as recently as our last Plan Commission meeting, we took the final, final, final draft back and just to make sure everything was fine. And the Plan Commission said it was, but then we were gonna bring it back for a formal adoption approval, and then we'll also bring it to the City Council after that, so that you'll probably be seeing possibly in December. South Main Street, the study is broken down into subareas. We had four different subareas, and within that, the report is fairly, I wouldn't say lengthy, but it's around 30-some pages. But we discussed in length the existing conditions for each one of the subareas, and we also did a SWOT analysis. And SWOT analysis is strengths, looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I know that. I just-- it's having a moment, you know? I am a senior, you know? Okay. We did a section on visions and goals and recommendations, and we also have some mapping and some spreadsheets there on that. There's a number of recommendations, and it's not just these three. This is just a sampling, but for example, we have recommendations on traffic design and calming, pedestrian and bicycle access, and screening of parking, and there's also a number of other recommendations in there. What we did was, if you looked at-- it's a little hard to read this, but we looked at each subarea, and within those subareas, talked about the different issues that are in there. This one just happens to be, I think that's subarea three, which would be the commercial district around Dix and the-- across the street for a gas station there for Quick Trip. So we broke those out and a little more intensive on that. And we also-- and this is just one of them, but we're also looking at specific redevelopment areas. This one is McEwen Property, which is kind of the obvious one that's there. That's the practically a full block in the center of the South Main Street Corridor. And we wrote up all the issues on there, and as you can see, it's right there. With that, we're gonna start to look ahead for the Plan Commission, and Amy's gonna take that.
I'll just preface this by saying that this is staff's kind of overview of where the Plan Commission might be going in the first six months of next year. We haven't had full discussion with the Plan Commission on this yet, but we are looking ahead to an ordinance update package in early 2017 that can include some of the following items, our cell tower ordinance, looking at brew pubs, our rental housing ordinance, columbaria, fences, and just a general cleanup of the ordinances that we have right now. We'll have that discussion with Plan Commission this month or next, and hopefully get some ideas from them as well as to items that need updating. We are also exploring training options for the Plan Commission in early 2017. There's a Center for Land Use Education out of Stevens Point that provides training for both Plan Commission and Board of Appeals, and so we're exploring those options at this time, too. And then we're also looking at some process updates for some of our applications and site plan review processes, et cetera, that we would be bringing forth early next year. I did want to, if you haven't heard yet, we did hire a new senior planner. Brandy Howe started with us a week ago Monday, and she's gonna be working on many of the ordinance updates that we were just talking about. So I know a few of you stopped in to say hi when she was here, and that was much appreciated. If you have any questions for either Tony or I, we can take those now.
What is columbaria?
A columbaria is a structure that is used to bury human remains.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Okay, next move on to administrator's report. If anybody has anything for Scott, or if Scott's got anything for us?
Happy to answer any questions.
Has there been any progress on the parking at the Oak Knoll? I'm not sure if you were here during that discussion or--
There's been additional discussing, discussion. I don't know that we've had progress, meaning that we don't have a result yet, so we're working on it.
Okay. Anybody else have questions for Scott?
I think Julie--
Oh, Julie. Julie's over there. Sneaking around there.
Yeah, sneaking around. I'm sorry I missed public comments. I was gonna introduce Jennifer Zylar before you voted on her as city clerk, but I could call her up now and have her speak to you for a couple minutes or a minute. She has been hired in the position of city clerk, as it was in the packet, and we're very happy to have her, although we're gonna lose Luann Hecht in December, so we'll have a little get-together for her, but we wanna welcome Jennifer.
Thank you very much. So I'm Jennifer Zylar. I had spent the last seventeen and a half years as the clerk deputy treasurer for the village of Grantsburg. I'm a certified municipal clerk, and also state and international, hold both designations. I'm really excited to be here. I'm really excited to learn about the community and to serve the public as the next city clerk. So if you have any questions for me, please, you know, let me know.
Where do you make your home? Where do you make your home?
Right now, I am commuting, but we--
From Grantsburg?
Right now.
You plan to move to River Falls, or?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, eventually we'll get here. A lot of transition. A lot of transition, so yes. But thank you very much. I appreciate the appointment, so.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Welcome to River Falls.
You have big shoes to fill.
No, I do. I have very big shoes to fill. I'm very fortunate that she's hanging out with me for a while, so. Very fortunate. So, thank you again.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, Scott, did you have anything else?
Scott, could I ask you a couple questions?
Oh.
What's the latest and greatest with-- and maybe Gordy can answer this, but what's the latest and greatest with what's going on with the University of Wisconsin River Falls signs? It seems like it's a continuous issue. Somebody's taken the U or taken the V or whatever in our Dropbox issue as well. Could that be discussed?
I am unaware of the University of Wisconsin River Falls sign issue. Are you chief?
On the roundabouts.
There's nothing to share in updates. I know that they have a few leads that they're working on, but other than that, there's nothing I can speak publicly about it.
Okay. In the Dropbox, is that something you can talk about, or where are we dropping off fines and tickets now? We used to have the box out front. Is that back up there now?
Yep, box is back up and reinforced and ready to accept your payments, so.
Okay. Good.
We discourage customers from dropping cash payments in the Dropbox, just as a matter of practice. If they have cash, we prefer they bring it in to in-person, but Dropbox is out there and secure, ready to go.
Okay. And do we start pretty soon, or odd-even parking issues, or what's our snow policy? Just a reminder for the people that are out there.
The date, I believe, is November, is it 1st or 15th?
1st.
November 1st.
So before our next meeting, so.
It'd be odd-even parking. We'll get something out on Facebook and the website and that, but we'll be observing. You should be parked. I'll make sure I get this right now. A lot of pressure on me.
I'm sorry.
It's the date as of 2:00 AM or 1:00 AM, is whatever helps you remember it. That's the side of the street you should be parked on, so not the side of the street that it is at 10:00 PM when you park, but what it's gonna be.
So November 1st, you can park on the odd side of the street, even side of the street you would not be parking on on November 1st.
On October 31st, you would park on the odd side of the street because it's gonna be November 1st after midnight.
Right. Yeah, too odd. Right, yeah, two odds in a row.
And we have been, uh, very helpful, I think, as a community, we've done typically, we do, you know, some reminder, um, reminders to folks on the first few nights, but it, we would appreciate, uh, those of you who've lived in the town for a while, helping your neighbors who haven't know kind of how that system works, and, and it's regardless of whether there's snow on the ground, so it, it's, allows us to be prepared to do efficient snow removals, um, even if it's sixty-five degrees outside, which sometimes it is, um, given our weather, so, thanks for the reminder.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, move on to the comptroller's report.
The comptroller's report for September 2016, general fund revenues through the end of September were eight million nine hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, or ninety-three percent of budgeted. Revenues in September included one point eight-eight million in land sales from land alikes for the wind field projects, fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars in payment in lieu of taxes from the River Falls Housing Authority, and forty-one thousand dollars in building permit revenue. Expend, expenditures for the same period were six million five hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars, or sixty-seven percent of budgeted, for a net of revenues over expenditures of two million four hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, then I did, I did have an appointment I was going to make, but I want to wait because I got some questions for staff about the two commissions and boards, so if that's okay with everybody, we'll wait on that. And next, we'll move into closed session, per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eighty-five, one G for the following purposes, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation and which it is or is likely to become involved, to wit thirteen hundred South Main Street. So Kristi, if we can have a roll call, please.
I think we need a motion.
Oh, no, I need a motion first, sorry.
I'll make a motion, we move into closed session.
Second.
Okay. Sorry, now Kristi, can we have a roll call?
Biersted?
Yes.
Kronk?
Yes.
Bjork?
Yes.
Odine?
Yes.
Gagne?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
We're in closed session.